You good? Okay. All right. Good evening. Tonight is February 13, 2025. Welcome to Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. At this time, can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing a mid-year review, discipline suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons, and CSEA collective bargaining negotiations pursuant of Article 14 of the civil service law?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now in executive session. Thank you.
All right, good evening everyone. At this time I'd like to return to open session and can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. All right, we don't have any agenda modifications, so at this point can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
It's all moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. 5.1 upcoming events. So it looks like there's Random Acts of Kindness Day is February 17th. Just make sure you do something nice.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, Friday, February 14th, that's tomorrow, midwinter recess, no school, all schools. Wednesday, February 19th, Hyde Park Education Foundation meeting, community, is that, oh wait, two different things, on the 19th. Hyde Park Education Foundation meeting is at Hyde Park Elementary at 6:00 PM. And then we have a community chat which is virtual, and that'll be 6:30 to 7:30 PM. On Thursday, February 20th, we have the District Steam Fair, that's at FDR, 4 to 6:00 PM. Wednesday, February 26th, the HMS Pops concert is at HMS at 6:30 PM. And then Thursday, February 27th is our next Board of Education meeting, that'll be a district office at 7:00 PM. Any other events?
Can we put in a commercial for the community chats? This is something the board decided to do a couple of years ago to get, be more accessible to the public who may not want to come and stand up in a meeting in front of everybody to discuss something. We were hoping to spread it around to different schools in a more, in a less formal atmosphere. Quite honestly, we were hoping for better attendance and would like to keep it going, so please take advantage of it.
Got you Pride 6.1.
So, beginning with Netherwood Elementary School. So a lot of our schools really try to kind of teach the students a little bit more about Lunar, Lunar Day, Lunar New Year. So we have at Netherwood where they had Netherwood students, they had a fun time learning more about it using food and more like arts and crafts, so kind of getting them more involved with hands-on things. So then at Ralph R. Smith, we also had several board members. So we also had several board members and administrators and also mayor students who participated in our celebration of World Read Out Loud Day last week. So these are just some pictures of some of our board members who attended this, this event, you know, teaching the students and reading to them. We, Mr. Darling would also like to thank everyone who took the time to come and read to the students and celebrate literacy. So he's very proud of that, so thank you to everybody. And then on the next slide we can see. And then on the next slide, we can see Giovanni LaFrontesa, who started playing the piano in the main lobby during Arrival on A Days. So it's a really nice way of, you know, having students involved, just showing music. So yeah, he plays when, during Arrival on A Days, and I think that's really cool for him to show off more of his musical talents. At North Park, they celebrated STEM, STEM Day last week. During the day, the P T A provided the opportunity for all the students to see interactive science. And at night, it was full of activities to engage with families. Many families participated in the Second Annual Principals Challenge, building a cereal box car ramp, so they competed against Mr. De Alessandro. They integrated Rocket rulers as a way for families to see some Science Twenty-One curriculum in action and some OSBots coding challenges in the library. There was also engineering challenges in the art room and cafeteria, so it was a really good way of having students do hands-on stuff with science. Ms. De Alessandro would like to thank everyone and all the over sixty families who came to the STEM night and the F D R students who joined and volunteered. So thank you for your time. At F D R, we, the Varsity Club and the National Honor Society are hosting a blood drive February twenty-seventh. It will be open to students during the day, and it will be public after school from two thirty to six. So this is actually the, you know, the first time in a couple of years after COVID that we are able to have the blood drive. So I would advise everyone to spread the word so you can really make it a big thing and continue it for years to come. Also at F D R, the F D R Formal Shop is February twenty-fifth after school. This is a great opportunity for students to come and try on prom dresses and suits and go home with their dream dresses, dresses for free. Also, if anyone is willing to, you know, donate clothing, Ms. Goodman is taking clothing and raffle items so that students are, you know, have more options to pick from and are able to have more to choose from. Also, contact her or Ashley Thomas for more information. I also think this is a really good opportunity to give students, you know, who don't really have much money to afford this stuff, so it's really nice, and it's also really nice for everyone to go and enjoy with their friends. Today at F D R, we also celebrated Valentine's Day, so we had the Della Notes, Ms. Martin organizes that with the Della Notes, and we actually had singing Valentine's. So there was, during periods, you know, students would come in and sing. It was really nice, I actually got to enjoy a lot of those throughout my day. So yes, that's all for Pride. Thank you.
Continue some Pride. So as we continue with some additional Pride, as you can see, there's many great things that are happening within our school district. I do want to recognize Jaylena Rodriguez from F D R. She was recognized as the youth honoree at the Thirty-Fourth Catherine Street Martin Luther King Celebration. And I had the privilege and honor to attend the event with both Margaret as well as Katie. It was a wonderful event. And right next to Jaylena, we're recognizing Ike Rothman. So I'm not sure how many of you understand how difficult this is. This young man has bowled a perfect game, three hundred. Now, I've been bowling, and if I break ninety, I'm happy. He bowled a perfect game, and we just want to congratulate him and his family and his coaches. We also want to recognize Moses Sakatowa, who was named the Poughkeepsie Journal Defensive Player of the Year, as well as our F D R Wrestling Team who took first place at the F D R Invitational Wrestling Tournament. So we want to wish them kudos and keep up the great work. We also have our J V and Varsity Cheer Team, who took coed first place at the Husky Rumble Cheer Competition in Highland. Kudos to our cheer team. And we also want to thank Melissa Rosario and our families that attended the first inaugural Saturday Academy at Hyde Park Elementary School. It was a great time had by all. The students and families participated with some math games, had a chance to have some breakfast together. This was on a Saturday morning from eight to noon, and they finished off, as you can see, with some reptiles. And so they had a chance, students had a chance to actually interact with the various reptiles that they provided. And so I want to thank Melissa Lawson, who also was part of coordinating that event. And at this time, I'll pass it back to our Deputy Superintendent, Jessica Turner.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Roman, the board, my fellow colleagues, we're always excited to have this part of our board meeting where we celebrate our portrait of a learner and our portrait of an employee. So this evening at Violet Avenue Elementary School, we are celebrating Camilla Arroyo Armenta. Can you come up here, please? She is our student portrait of a learner. And our interim principal is going to say a few words.
Yeah, I had a beautiful write-up here from a really proud E N L teacher, so I thought I'd share some of what was written. Looks like Camilla, when she came here, was actually in second grade from Ralph R. Smith. And she transitioned to the new school seamlessly, she got right to work. She's, her language skills improved in such an impressive rate in such a short time. And she's just a model student, she's conscientious with her work, she takes criticism well, and then she comes back with even better work. So she's, she's just your model student. She enjoys being part of a group, she also likes being a leader, you know, even when, you know, when she's, she can be asked sometimes, but sometimes she likes taking a leadership role. So, and I've seen that in the lunchroom, too. She's, she's just a model student all the way around. She thinks outside the box, loves to be part of groups. She attends many things outside of school, she's been to Summer Bridge, she does this after-school program, she does P T A functions, any E N L functions. She's just very kind and respectful to her teachers, her friends, her staff, and everyone that's around her. If she sees something that's wrong, she'll let you know it, and she wants to make it right. So a lot of the good traits that we want to have in our students, and this is why we recommended Ms. Arroyo Armenta as our portrait of a student. Thank you. Congratulations, Donna.
You can go shake everybody's hand. Do you want to shake their hands? When she's done, just have her stay up here, because we're gonna, I'll get her. In addition to our portrait of a learner, we always like to celebrate our employees who exemplify the same characteristics. This evening at Violet Avenue Elementary School, we are celebrating Donna Lau. May, can you please come up?
And I'll say a few nice things about Donna, and actually I had to shorten it up because it was very lengthy. I had a couple of them that came, and it was, so I'm gonna do my best here to try to make this concise. But anyways, Donna is a shining example of a wonderful Hyde, Hyde Park employee. Donna teaches A I S reading, always puts her students first, she spends hours, both during the week and on weekends, preparing lessons to meet needs of her diverse caseload. Donna organizes, picks up, or organizes pickups, wraps and distributes books for our students as part of, and I didn't know about this, this is awesome, her angel, or her book Angel Project, which is around the holidays. Donna supports staff in a very important, in a very important manner. She's, she's a part of many social committees where she actually purchases gifts, arranges deliveries, sends in donations, you know, when situations arise. Donna's a member of the V A S P T A, I should say Violet, I keep saying V A S, I shouldn't say that, but Violet Avenue School P T A. She volunteers after school, she's, she's worked after school at many of the P T R, P T A functions. She's a member of the Mid-Hudson Reading Council, and often she's sharing ideas for those that are lucky enough to get to work with her every day. So congratulations, she's just a great example of a Hyde Park employee. Thank you, Donna.
And then we're gonna go to our photo app moment where we have the board and my colleagues and Dr. Roman join in the front to take a picture with our portrait of a learner and portrait of employee. So parents, you can take your photos, too.
Am I still up?
Maybe. So any more Pride from anyone? Okay, moving on to seven point one, superintendent's report.
Good evening, Board, and good evening to our community. I have just a couple of announcements or things that we're following. So we're closely monitoring all of the executive orders and, and looking at the impact on our federal funds. Our federal funds support our students with special needs, our Title One, Title Two, Title Three. So we're, we're really paying close attention to that. We'll continue to give the board an update on those various funding streams that we do receive to provide our students with what they need to be successful. Last week, we celebrated National Counseling Week, and this week, or this month, we're celebrating Love the Bus Month. And we just want to recognize our bus drivers, monitors, mechanics, office staff, for all that they do to transport our students to and from school in a safe manner. That concludes my remarks, and I'll pass it over to any of my colleagues who have anything that they want to add.
Thanks, I just wanted to add that we are in the process of accepting U P K applications this month. And we're very excited to meet our newest members of our community. So if families have a student who will be four by December first, they can make an appointment with the registration office. And also, if families are looking forward to registering for kindergarten, that begins on March tenth. So we're looking forward to meeting our new little friends.
Thank you. I'd like to give an update on the E V bus that we had the, as the board might remember, we had the issue with the twelve-volt battery. It was draining the bigger battery, and we couldn't turn the bus on in the mornings, or the battery didn't have enough charge for a run. The bus was sent to the manufacturer's facility in Middletown. They did a full analysis and determined that the camera system is draining the battery. It's the camera system that was installed after we received the bus through Bus Patrol, which is actually the county's vendor. So Leonard Bus Sales is going to work with our Transportation Department to meet with Bus Patrol, to talk to them about what happened and come up with ideas to prevent that in the future. So they'll need to reinstall the camera, but follow the specifications from the manufacturer. And the bus should be delivered to our bus garage tomorrow. No, the camera, the camera's not fixed at this time, the camera's been unhooked or unplugged. And Leonard Bus Sales will work with the Transportation Department to resolve the issue with Bus Patrol, which is the vendor that installed the cameras.
Quick question, is that, is that something that could be unplugged in the evenings and plugged back in in the morning so that we can still use the bus?
I'm not sure, but I, I, that is a question that I have for Brian, our head mechanic, I haven't talked to him about it. I just got an email from Leonard Bus Sales. Yep, they didn't indicate that that could be a fix, they just said they would work with us to get a resolution with Bus Patrol.
All right, moving on to seven point two, our Violet Ave School update with Mr. Whedon.
Well, thank you very much for having me tonight. This was definitely a task, we had a short time here, but, but I was able to pull together some information for you, so I think, I think you all appreciate it. We'll get through the first couple of slides here. So basically, who we are, I see that there's a lot of cool things that have been happening here, which is, which is awesome to see. I have my experience in another school district, so you guys have some things here at this school district that I, that I actually love, actually, and music, when I see kids, especially like in the next slide here, that are in an orchestra, starting really at an early age. That's something that we don't start where I came from, so I thought that was pretty impressive. And, but at this time, I would like to spotlight some, a program that we actually do have, there's, there's plenty of them here that I had to choose from, which was fantastic. But it was, basically, I want to call it our peer reading program for our fifth and, and first graders. So if I could have Jamie Mojica come up and Susie Greer, they'd like to say a few words about the, the program and what they do.
Good evening, everyone, we are Susie and Jamie with. Soraya.
Hello, my name is Chloe.
Dominic.
We are students in Mrs. Woods and Mrs. Doyle's classes. We are here to tell you about the Reading Buddies Programs, Program our class is talking, participate in together.
Back in early October, our fifth grade class began visiting our first grade reading buddies on E Days. Together, we read and talk about books we select for them during our library class with Ms. Billis. We help our buddies learn, we, we help our buddies learn new words. As we move through the school year, our buddies start reading to us. Our reading buddies are always excited to see us, and we are excited to see them, too.
During the holiday season, we exchange cards and shared cookies and juice. We can't wait to hear the stories our reading buddies will write to share at their author's celebration. In the spring, our reading buddies will visit our classroom with new pencils, sweet treats, and words of encouragement on state testing days. In June, we will share some playground time and ice pops before we say goodbye for the summer.
Our grade did not have a chance to be reading buddies with the fifth graders because of remote learning during COVID. As fifth graders, we are very glad that we can have this experience and share it with you tonight. We look forward to sharing more stories and having fun times with them during the second half of the year.
Hello, my name is Chloe.
Do you, do you love having your reading buddies come?
Yeah. I love having my readings, but, my reading buddies come every day. It makes me feel safe when they're around me.
Oh, good job, guys.
I will clarify, it's on a six-day cycle. And I do love it when I get to see them out in the hallway. It's, it's just great to see, you know, our kids in a different light, being leaders. You know, our fifth graders getting an opportunity to become leaders with another young person. So I, I do love this program, so I hope it continues on. So, so I appreciate your, your work. Thank you.
Mr. Whedon, just, just before you continue, if the students have to go home and prepare for their long weekend, this is a really good time to break.
Yeah, I'm going to cover a bunch of data you might not be interested in. Maybe you are. I don't know.
Thank you, Violet scholars and families.
Okay, so anyways, I will go over our, our building goals. I had to learn these myself, so actually, it was actually great. I actually met grade level by grade level in my office to try to get a sense of, you know, what the building goals were all about and what we have done so far. So actually, I, instead of reading each one, I'll, I'll read the goals real quick. I just kind of summarized them for you. So basically, establish protocols, improve growth, character add and attendance. I know attendance is a big thing with the, with the district as well. Improve community engagement. I know that's another huge thing that we would like to continue to do. I think Violet does a great job with that. From what I found out, we actually do, and I'll give good examples of that in a moment. And the reading program implementation. We've started a new reading program to try to help with the science of reading. That's what the, the SOR is for. So anyways, here are the action steps, basically. And I'll let you read a lot of those action steps, you know, yourself. But I'll, I'll give you examples of how we utilize some of this time. So the collaboration time has been great, too. This is something that's different. It's built in every day. I find that I'm utilizing it with the staff to talk about individual student needs, so that's been a great protocol that's been established. I don't know how long it's been in place, but I do find that to be valuable, to go over data with, with teachers and talk about individual students. PBIS, I came from a PBIS school. There's some things that we could work on here, but I, I could help with. We used to have monthly meetings, and I'm going to try to, in, in the spring, we're going to be working on trying to get monthly assemblies as really they're, they're meant to, for me to have an opportunity to talk to kids about the kind of character traits that I would love to see them have in, in the building, and just a short speech on that. And, but it's also a fun event where we do something fun that, and engaging, that keeps them educated in, in some way. We just had the Nutty Scientist, and that was, I kind of used that opportunity at the beginning to go over some, some, some rules of things that I saw in the building. And then I turned it over to Nutty Scientist. We had a great assembly, and he's coming back for an evening engagement program later next month on the 4th, so. So I'll be looking forward to that. And, and I've, we've been talking a lot with the teachers, trying to establish, what are we going to do at least once a month? Evening and during the day, because I want the kids excited to come to school, and I'm hoping that it'll improve attendance as well. But anyway, I'll give you some, some examples of things that, for goal number one, things that they've, they've done in the, in the past. You could see from the other slide, they, the fifth grade does a lot of stuff, which is awesome. They went to New York City. They, they went to the Statue of Liberty. So these are things that I, I got to learn. They, they've done the Turkey Trot. They've, they do this 12-day of kindness by the fifth grade. And so the fifth grade does a lot as, as well here. Fifth grade contests with special prizes. But what we plan on doing in the, in the future is, there's, there's more student trips and activities that are planned. We're trying to get the, the calendar set for the spring to make it exciting for kids that want to be here. And this will be great opportunities to improve our, our PBIS goals. I, I believe Girls in the Run is coming back. Of course, I'm, I'm asking for, you know, I want both to, to attend, so I'm trying to figure this out. Even if I have to run something, because I'm a runner myself, so if I can figure this out, I, I like to include everybody. I, I do realize that Girls in the Run is, is a great program, and there's a reason for that. When I, when I, I was a cross-country coach for many years, I had a lot of trouble getting females to be on the cross-country team, but I didn't have trouble getting guys. You know, at one point, I had 20 guys, but seven girls. And you need at least five for a team. And in the last few years, I had, I struggled even field a team. So I think that Girls in the Run is, is a great confidence builder for girls at a young age. Where it seems like the guys, I don't know, they had, they have that, they have the confidence many times. But, but I still like to keep them active, so that's why I'd like to get something going for, for the guys as well. I see there's a lot of recess clubs and stations that are going around. I know they have that, I heard about the knitting club during recess. There's, there's a lot of cool things that are going on for, for the kids here at the, at the school that support, you know, this particular goal and, and our PBIS goals. And, and, and the attendance goal is just trying to make it fun so kids really want to be here. I also, you know, things I don't know about, but firefighting, firefighter kickball game is supposed to be coming up. I guess that's a really fun event, and I know that the firemen like coming here, and that's, and that's awesome. I saw the smokehouse earlier. You know, pictures of that in the year, so that's, that's awesome that they're, you know, that they're willing to come to the school often. And, I mean, they're right across the street, which I, which I know. But it's great to have them as part of the community as well. For number two, I think, goal number two, when we're talking about, let's see, what are this? Here we go. The family engagement stuff. There's been a lot of stuff that's happened in, in the fall. And if you didn't know that, we had, they had the fire safety thing going on, the haunted hallways. Maris Play for the fifth, kindergarten through fifth graders, Meet the Staff Night, Glow Dance, the recycling program, the Science STEM programs that have been going on with the PTA. I, I went to one, when I first got here, it was like only a few days in that, that I went to one, and I got to meet a few parents. Of course, I would have loved to have seen more attendance at that, at that particular event, which is my goal, to try to get more people coming in. And we'll, we'll try to pump up these after-school activities so that we get more engagement with, with the families. So, and so in January, and to June here, I know that the 100th Day is going to come up, and actually, two more days. It'll be on Wednesday. So there'll be the 100-day celebration. We'll be doing something with St. Patty's Day. IBM Engineers are coming in. STEM Arbor Day Celebration. I know PTA is doing a STEM Night for that. And it looks like it's going to be a fun event where we're going to have stations, and I'm hoping that a lot of staff will, will be involved with that, and we'll get a lot of participation with that, where they're talking about making seed balls and things you can actually plant. And there's a lot of cool things that we can do for, for the Arbor Day Celebration. I know there's a, there's a, some things I didn't know about, but the tall and small ball that they have. Third-grade family cultural celebration that'll be coming up, multicultural dance, music from around the world, and that, that'll be for third through fifth grade, writing celebration, and authenticity. Fireman's Bike Rodeo. I don't know anything about that. I'm looking forward to seeing what that's, what that's going to be about. And of course, we have the, there's a, a lot of schools do this for the state tests. They'll offer some kind of incentive to try to be here, be prepared, you know, for food. So there's going to be an ice cream party celebration for that. So hopefully, the kids will do their best. Kindergarten ice cream party will happen, and the fifth grade ball. So there's a lot of stuff that I think we have going for us and that we're going to be doing in, in the future to help support our family engagement. Now, on the last goal here, which is really the, the reading curriculum, things that we've done in the, in the, in the fall that I found out about was, you know, pick a reading partner program, the Principal's Reading Challenge that went on. It had to do with some, doing so many words, and, and they were able to meet that, meet that goal. There was a literacy night the PTA put on with the book fair. There was a book bash. We have, they reviewed the MAPS data with parents during parent evening. The Ufly training happened for that, for the new product that we have to support the science of reading. We have a lot of literacy coaches going on, monthly guest speakers in kindergarten that have been going on. And we have the fifth grade Penn Pal program to improve those writing skills, which I think is awesome. So from this point forward, though, we're still, we're going to, we've already scheduled one, actually, an author visit, which is great. The Hudson Valley Fresh, this is something I don't know about, but Hudson Valley Fresh Chocolate Ice, Chocolate Milk persuasive essay for the fifth grade. So librarian visits from Poughkeepsie Library. Foster Grandparent Program. I love to see that. We had an RSVP program. That's where we had the retired seniors come into our school. I would love to get something like that going. But we do have Mr. Heater, who I met, who comes in here at least three days. And I, I found out he's an IBM engineer, ex-board president, and longtime board member, so, and he comes in often. And so when you retire and you love education, you don't fully retire. So you, you come back and you help, and you read, and you come into the school. So I hope that all, all of you will do the same thing, if you're, if you love the school and come back and get in the elementary school. It makes you feel young and gets you out of the house. I know this is something I will probably do, even though I'm getting close to that retirement age. I don't know if I could ever give it up. I love coming to school. And then we have, we just purchased recently, because we had some money left, for our leveled literacy program to have, you know, we, we need some more books that we, I knew we were missing to help level our, have leveled libraries in some of the classrooms, and especially our AIS room. So we've just placed a recent order for that to support our reading goal. Are there any questions before I move on? So this is the first slide here. We're going to go over some state data. And data is data. If this, if I compared this to, you know, in, in the past, where I came from, or, but I can tell you right now even where I came from, the, the data is pretty similar. And it, it makes you gasp sometimes. You know, just to see the number of, because we're expecting more threes and fours. I mean, the one thing you can do, and I'll show you in, in the other slides, there is some positive to glean out of this. So this is three, three grades. And you can see the bands for that particular in 2024. So on the next slide, we have, it's just grade three, but it's a six-year view. And now in 2020, there wasn't any, anything, obviously, because it was COVID year. But if you just focus even on the last three years, you know, 2022, 23, and 24. I mean, one positive thing I can glean out of this is there were, there were some fours, which was awesome, because previous to the period of two years, there were none. So that's a good thing. However, that band of not proficient really needs to change, and that's really something we have to work on here to try to get that changed. And I think even attendance is going to help with that as well. Work out, if we can get the kids here, and I'll, when I get to that slide, you'll, you'll see why. If they're, if they're not here, they're not going to learn. So fourth grade, and once again, this is a six-year view. If, if you look at, and if you look at the, the titles under, under these, you can see that, you know, the top is, is where you actually have your proficient. I mean, the excels, and then the orange would be proficient. And then, of course, the, the, the blue section there is their, they're nearing that. So they're, they're, they're partially proficient. So the, the purple is your ones, and that's, we want to try to change that. But if you look over the years, though, you can actually see the bands, at least for the top three, have improved. So we've, we've pulled more kids, or we, you guys have pulled more kids out of the, out of the Level One, which is great. So that's, that's something positive we can glean, just like to see more threes and fours. Same thing in, uh, uh, grade five. You can see the six-year view. Once again, it looks like it's pretty steady there as far as the number of those that had, where exceeds. It's about the same. And, but you can see, we, we dropped some in the Level One, which we need to work on. So it's, it's just data is telling us that we have stuff to work on here, to get these kids here and get them reading. So our math scores is in a similar type of view here. You can look at the three years for third, fourth, and fifth grade. And of course, we want all of our kids to be in that purple and green section there. And it looks like it's, you know, pretty consistent there. Last year, the band was a little bit wider. I would have loved to see more threes this year, but hopefully, that'll, that'll change for this coming year with, with the work that we've been doing. For third grade, the six-year band, you can see here. And once again, if you look at the, the positive stuff, you can say, okay, I'm, I'm looking at the ones or the twos, the four, threes, and twos, that, those bands are getting wider there. So at least we're, we're pulling more kids out of Level One, which is great. And the same thing here in, in grade four math. So more kids are, are moving out of, out of the, the bottom tier. And grade five, same thing. So that purple is getting smaller in math at a much higher rate than ELA. I mean, I would love to see ELA at least on this same track. Now, this is just a, this is the first year for the science test. There's nothing really to compare it to from, from year to year, so this just shows you. And now it's, it's, once again, though, I was a principal a long time ago, and I, and the, the threes and fours used to be 95 to 100%. And I, and that, and there was a difference in testing, though, too, I will admit, because back then, we had the kits, we practiced them at the school, we knew what the questions were, and you really practiced to that test. And so that's why we had the 95 to 100%, whereas now, that's not the case. The test is much harder. So I would definitely love to see that blue and the, and the orange get much better, and I'm sure you would as well. Just some quick data here from the MAPS. I'm not as familiar with the MAPS data, other than this is nationally normed, and I, I did do some digging. It's, it's actually normed to students that took it in 2020. So it's, so the, the percentages here, you're looking at, and this is a building, it's just combined everything. It was a, it was a way that I, I just went in. I didn't break it all down. I did that with the teachers when we had our SPL Day. But for, for this purpose, I just let you know, it was, it was pretty decent data. I mean, you want, you want, this is all on a bell curve. So if your children are at the 50th percentile, that's where at minimum you want your kids to be, because you're just average nationwide with, with other kids. Of course, we'd love to be higher than that, but you can see that there was a, a change in, in MAPS for ELA from fall to fall. It went from the 46th to the 48th, 2%. And in math, you can see that it went from 44th, 44th percentile to the 53rd, which is actually pretty awesome, to make that kind of a change in math. So hopefully, we see that kind of a change in the future. So math, you can see both, both the state test and through MAPS is actually showing much more positive data as far as moving kids. We just need to, once again, keep working on that ELA skills, which actually will help in the math as well, because those are the problems that I can tell you that they're missing in math are the word problems. Now, suspension data, this is, I, I figured you just want to know, it's just data, but it's actually for me as well, because I wanted to know, it's like, how many, how many kids are actually being suspended? If they're not, if they're not in school, they can't learn as well. So at the elementary school, you can see that, at least for me, the pattern is, we try not to suspend out of school so, so much. The, the green is the out of school, the blue is the in-school. So we've had some situations lately, and you just tried not to do that. So we, we, we want to keep the kids in school, so at least they have time to be in school and learn. So that will change a little bit, but that was as of January 30th, this data was pulled from. Attendance data, this is the same thing. Now, we are at 92%, which is a little better than last year, which is, which is great. We just hope that we can keep kids coming to school. And if they can come to school here, we're going to be able to teach them what they need to know. And now the, the data we have here goes from the beginning of the school year only until January, I believe it's the 25th, 25th. Okay? So I could have put up another one, but you guys had the slides for this one already, but, but it's, it's, it's nice to see that it is improving, and now I, I will let you know on this, there's a lot of data points with this. So when you improve even a percentage, that, that's a big deal for the number of data points. So right, like right now, we're at over 30,000 data points in, in, you know, with our school, because we have over 300 kids. We're nearing the 100, the 100th day of school, so you can see why we have 30,000 data points for all the kids. So to make a percentage change, or even a 10th, it's a big deal. So, but our goal is to actually, to make announcements. We have some ideas of what we want to do. If you go outside in the hallway, you'll see that I've actually had the, the data posted for each grade level. You'll see that fourth grade is actually our, our top grade level right now. They're about 94%. So they're actually closer to that, at least that 95th percentile that I would love to see, you know, school at, at every single grade level. Now, we know there's a lot of factors with that. You know, we don't, we have kids here that are, that are sick. We get that. But the, we also know that families choose to take a family maybe the week before vacation, because it's cheaper to go to Disney World the week before vacation, then you have the, the week off. Now, your child's out for two weeks. And it's really hard. It's like starting back over from summer vacation. So I would really encourage families to really look at the number of days and your holidays that you actually take with your children. And I know that there's a push, like Mental Health Days. I would allow my kids a, a day or two for the year, but it seems like, you know, it's, sometimes it's allowed one a week. But you, you can't learn that much when you're here four days a week. So that's why I would like to encourage families to, you know, really look at, you know, what you're doing. If your child is really having, you know, mental issues, I don't want to, I don't want to go there and touch that, but is it that or is it something else? There's a trade-off when they're not at school. So I would definitely encourage, and I've sent, we sent letters home last week. We've had calls already, but they were positive letters. They weren't negative. It was just to remind her and say, hey, just a nudge to say, hey, this is where your, your child is. And if you look at the next slide, you'll see the orange section is really what we're focused on here. So we're looking at 26, it's pretty steady. 26 to 27% fall in the chronic absenteeism rate every year in this, in this school. And that's just not a good thing, because now if you look at that. And that's just not a good thing, because now if you look at that, that's, that's kids that are missing more than 10% of the school year. So in the, in the blue, if you go all the way over to the edge, you'll see, a purple, rather, those are the kids that have 100%. And then it breaks it all the way down to 10%. So I'm not concerned about the kids that have missed five days, or where, where, come to the 100th day of school. If they've missed 10 days of school, that's significant, but I'm not going to worry about that child so much as I am the one that's missed 30 days, 40 days, 60 days, and those we have on the roster. So in those cases, we, I've given a nice nudge, I'm going to keep track of the attendance for the future, and I'm, I'm going to be meeting with some of those parents to see what can we do to support you, to get your child. You know, is it something that, that we can do here to help your child come to school? Because we really need them here, because that, that right there, the change in that is going to change all of our scores drastically here, to get us back in the threes and fours where we need to be and where we want to see our kids. Otherwise, it's going to take them much longer to get those skills, those proficient reading skills that we want them to have after third grade. We want them to be proficient. That's, that's the whole idea between the science of reading. You know, when I started this back in, when I became an elementary principal in the early 2000, the reading grant first came out. And it was a great thing, because it taught me a lot, just by going through the grant itself, and doing all the writing, and going through all, and traveling everywhere to learn about what's, what is the science of reading, what is it really about? And we were able to train our teachers in that. And somehow, we shift in education, and we've shifted away from that, and I'm glad we've shifted back, because I saw how it worked. In Arizona, I saw how it worked with, I had a high population of ENLs in my school, I had like 70 kids, I had 600 kids in my school. And it was, it was double the size of this with a, with a lot of ENLs, and the phonics programs that we had there worked. And that's what I want to, I'll even press that on teachers, AIS teachers, those programs work. So give those programs a chance. Ufly, it's from the University of Florida, University of Oregon, those were the, two of the biggest researchers for that back in the 2000s, that when we first were building the reading first initiative. So with that, are there any other questions?
I had a question. In your ELA scores, and I think I know the answer to this question, but your fourth-grade group, there's much more proficient and exceedingly proficient students in your fourth-grade group than in the third and the fifth grade. So what's different? Like, what different did they have?
That's the challenge, that's the challenge. We may have data groups, that's the challenge that we look at. So is it, is it the test? Is the test easier? We can compare that to other tests, you know, across, is the fourth-grade scores across the state? Is it that? Or is it our population? There's a lot of factors that play into that. So it's a lot different than a norm reference test, so they, the state changes the questions all the time, and sometimes, you know, I'll be honest, sometimes you get a grade level that it's, it's much easier. And that's happened in seventh grade, seventh and eighth grade, when I noticed the math scores, it, it just, just happens, where one test is just so much easier, it makes the seventh-grade ELA teacher look phenomenal. And then it's like, and then when they go to eighth grade, it's like, what happened? You know, and I've seen huge, over the years, I've seen that happen with, with the changing of the test. And we've changed, once again, we changed curriculum in New York State. So they're constantly putting new questions out there and trying to get it right. But what we want to do is compare ourselves to New York State, those in BOSI's, our BOSI's region, for the New York State test, and see, how are we doing regionally? Because I think kids are kids, you know, in our area, and we should be really going towards that. I mean, I guess I'm not worried about the threes and fours so much if the entire region, you know, and let's say in third grade, is doing poorly, which, the scores are low, but ours don't match that quite here. So I still am concerned with third grade here. That's, it is sad when I look at the scores for third grade, there's something we need to do early on, because we want them to be proficient from kindergarten. In third grade, we want them reading proficiently. Okay?
So just follow up, I think to your point, you know, the, the attendance is so key, because your data is going to be completely out of whack.
Oh, yeah, and if they're not here for the test.
You know, as a teacher, you know, if you're constantly in the state where you're trying to remember which kid was out on which date and, and which assignments had to be made up, it's really hard to move the whole class forward. With that said, I don't personally like the term chronically absent, because I think in some cases, you have kids who have medical conditions. We talked about this earlier as a group, and if a kid has a major medical condition, they have to go to the neurologist or something like that, you know, that's a very specific thing.
Right, and those are the letters we pulled, when we have our data meetings.
Right.
I pulled those, because I know that that's going on with that child.
Sure. So what would you say are the biggest reasons why, you know, children are out? Sometimes parents just can't get somebody to watch, watch the child.
Correct.
Or they need to go to work or what have you. What are the top reasons, would you say?
Just from experience, you know, not knowing your neighborhood here, but that's, I think that is, when you look at economics, there is, there is a difference. I had another slide, I didn't show that to you guys, but there was another data point when you look at, you know, economics regarding to absenteeism rate. There's, there is, if you're, if you have parents that have a vehicle that can get here all the time, they're going to get here on time if they're driving. If you have somebody that has a vehicle that breaks down, you know, they don't have the funds to get it working, and they live, you know, ways away, their child's not coming to school. So anything we can do to get, I would encourage any family, if you're having trouble with your vehicle, use the bus system, get your child here. I know some parents have a phobia about that, and I get it. COVID didn't help either, you know, I don't want my kid getting sick with other kids, so that didn't help to bring kids back on the bus. But if we can get kids on the bus, we can get them here. It also makes it safer for drop-off, too, so I don't have so many parents waiting, you know, in line and being frustrated, because they think they're waiting in line a long time, but, you know, actually, if I put it in reality, it's like, guys, we've had that, we have talked to some parents, but it's, you're here for like 10, 15 minutes in all reality. So it's just like, you gotta, you know, just be patient, and if you're going to drop your child off, you know, and be safe. But I, but I do think that, you know, economics plays a big part, part of that as well. So, yeah, that could be one of the biggest factors here. But also, you know, there's just a belief, or there's just not that same belief that you need to be present. You know, I, I don't know, my parents, my parents believed that I had to be at school every day. I was that kid that was at school every day, so I'm on that other end. I probably missed a couple of days my, you know, my entire career. My senior year, I missed more, because I wanted to be the cool kid, so I at least took a couple of days off, you know, so that was about it. And that, but that factored into my work life, too.
Yeah.
I mean, if you looked at, you know, and I, and I would give this example to kids, too. If you look at my work life, or how many days I had when I, when I left Watkins Glen, I mean, I had, I had a ton. I could count on one hand the number of days I was, I was off in 20 years for sickness, so.
Yeah, and I believe, again, I applaud Dr. Roman and the district for putting that emphasis on attendance. We've, we've had a big push for that. You know, I work at a high school, so sometimes with high school parents, you hear that it's hard to get the kid up in the morning and so forth, but with the little kids, you know, it's, it's, it's a big challenge, obviously, to your point. You have to be here to be able to learn and so forth. We send out robo-calls, we send out letters, we make phone calls, I'm sure you're going to schedule meetings, but, you know, unless you have some kind of extenuating medical issue, as I mentioned, is extremely important for the kids to be here, or else our teachers can't do their jobs.
Right. And so building positive relationships, too, with the parents, trying to get them, get them to know me. It's like, when I'm contacting you, I'm not a bad guy, I just want the best for your child, just like you want the best for your child. So that's what I want to impress upon the community. But they need to be here for us to make that big difference. So anything I can do to support this, I'm going to. So I, I hope that, no, there's a lot of resources we can put on the web, but I also know that a lot of the parents that, that are having that issue aren't looking at our website for those resources. So that's, we could say, well, we put it up there, we could feel good about it, but we actually have to direct them to those, to those resources, you know. So, and it could be, you know, things like, I don't know, in my, my community, I don't know, I have to find out what some of those things are, but I heard in our meeting today in admin about some community partnerships that we have, you know, for food, and there might be something that's available for, we used to give chips for bus rides and stuff like that to families that couldn't make it, you know, if cars broke down, here's some chips, so you can have your child ride the bus, you know, like the city bus, if there's one available in your community to do that. So I don't know if that's available here, because I haven't seen anybody drop off in that matter, but maybe it is a possibility.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just a comment. Thank you. As an interim, I'm not going to ask too many things, but you mentioned an evening engagement. If you could send us an invitation to that, because we'd like to see.
Oh, for the fourth, yes. That one's, that one's going to be about space, I believe.
Yeah, so.
So, so, yes.
If you remember that we.
Yes.
If anybody can make it, we'd like to see some of these programs. And then I just wanted to, you talk about attendance and engagement, programs like the Reading Buddies, I guarantee that those first graders are coming to school on Reading Buddy days. So allowing schools to do all of these programs where kids are engaged, I mean, when you have a first grader, say, unprompted, that Reading Buddy, Reading with my buddy makes me feel safe.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the gold right there. And those, that's why kids are going to want to come to school. So I just want to say, yes, we need to look at science of reading, yes, we absolutely have to look at our literacy programs, which the teachers will tell you they've been wanting to do. I just really, you know, applaud all the extra things that are happening to keep kids engaged with books and reading, and you've got older kids getting, you know, safe connections with younger kids, so just congratulations on all of that. It's great to see, and I hope it continues. Thanks.
Me, too. I hope so, too. I hope there's, I hope there's an impact. Whenever I come to school, I want there to be an impact. So I'm hoping I can make an impact in the time that I'm here. So, so I thank you for your time. I think I'm done with my section, unless you have any more questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I add something? Sorry.
Wait, we do, we do have a question.
It's not a question. No, I just want to personally say as well, sorry, that I really did like that you mentioned about the Reading Buddies, because when I, I was a student at Violet Avenue, I actually had the opportunity to also teach or read with one of Ms. Doyle's class.
See what a fine speaker you've turned out to be. Perfect. That's a good example.
Thank you. So I do think that, you know, that is also a reasoning why students really want to come to school. And, you know, as a high school student, I feel like the same thing happens at the high school, you know? If we create more activities that are fun and make students want to come to school, I definitely think that that would increase attendance as well, because, you know, even, even if you're not considered a kid anymore, you still want to experience those fun things.
We actually had a program, maybe I could talk about that. Our high school, they actually got credit, they actually got credit for doing that. They would come to my elementary school when I was the elementary principal, and I would sign out the sheet, and they would, they would get credit for a class to do that. So it was like a work, it was like a work thing. So I don't know, that's something you have to talk to the high school principal, and maybe the board include this as a new class.
Yes, I mean, some of my other classmates do, we do come back for the haunted hallway that is hosted at Violet Avenue. So yes, we always love coming back to Violet Avenue. But yes, I would also agree with Ms. Katoni, that programs like Reading Buddies and, you know, more interaction with even just, you know, kids and kids, students and students, does create a better environment at Violet Avenue and any other school. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the kind words.
All right, moving on to 7.3, our budget update with Dr. Roman and Ms. Steinberg. You can't leave, you have to listen.
So today marks the second budget presentation that we're providing to the board and the community. And so today, we're really focusing on just an overview on what are the drivers for our budget this upcoming year, how it's aligned. We're going to talk a little bit about the revenues and the expenditures, and we're going to close it with going over some of the budget requests that have come to our team, and we'll talk a little bit about that during the next presentation. We'll talk about what process we went through to eliminate some of the items or disprove some, some of the items that have been brought forward. Today, we're going to go through what those items are, and these are items that have been brought to our attention by our administrators. And so I want to start off by discussing the key drivers that we're using as a foundation for our, our budget presentation. So making sure that we continue to have our programs and services follow the needs of the students. We want to preserve what programs we currently have that are working and making an impact, and continuing to move those forward. We want to ensure that we have structures and systems in place that are efficient and effective. We want to ensure that the programs that we do put forward and resources, that we, we do so to ensure that we can do that in a financially stable manner, and always keeping in mind the taxpayers, making sure that we keep the taxpayers in mind in terms of the impact with the items that we're bringing forward to the board. We, we are using our blueprint for excellence in Hyde Park, which is our strategic plan, to align all of the items. So we have charged our administrators to provide a rationale for each of the items that they have requested, and align that to the different areas in our strategic plan that speak to student experiences, health and safety, family and, family engagement, highly qualified staff, and last but not least, finance, facilities, and food service. In terms of the budget process, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Steinberg.
Thank you. Can I use your tablet? Nice. I don't have to use the paper. So I just want to say, I love being at Violet Ave. This is the school that, where the board meeting was the night that I was appointed in 2012, so I always love coming back here. So thank you. So we had talked last time about the rollover budget, and how it, at the time that we were presenting it, we were already farther along in the process, and that's true tonight, too. We always have a little bit of lag in the budget presentations, because we prepare the presentations, get them to J for the inclusion on the agenda, and we're still working on it. So what you see tonight is where we were last week, and we've moved a little bit farther along, and you'll see the results of that at the next presentation. But up on the screen now is the budget development process. The first thing we did was create the rollover budget. That's what we presented at the last meeting, which was really just the budget starting point. It was showing where we were at, if we wanted to keep everything the same next year, what it would cost the district, because even when we keep items the same, there's still escalation costs, like things are, cost a little bit more, but specifically with payroll and with the benefits, there's increases in that. After we have the rollover, then we start drilling down more into the other budget codes. We receive more information about other benefits. We really analyze what we have in our payroll codes. Are we budgeting for the right amounts, for the right types of, of work? And we look at the, all of the requests that we get from the administrators, too. Like Dr. Roman mentioned, we're going to show you all of the requests that we got from the administrators. We're also going to show you where we are in the budget process now, but just keep in mind that the budget we're showing you tonight does not have any of the administrator requests in it yet. It's just where we are, as if we were moving forward without adding anything. After we figure out the budget gap, which is really the difference between the revenues and the expenditures, we'll have to determine if the amount of fund balance that we would be recommending to have in the budget to balance it is something that's appropriate. We don't want to utilize too much fund balance, so that we're jeopardizing our fund balance for future years, but we also don't want to use too little if we have the funds available to us, because we could use that to help offset some of the tax levy. So once everything is put together, and we get the final rates for our health insurance, we determine what we'll be rolling over, or I'm sorry, what we'll be accepting from the administrator request, we'll develop the final preliminary budget. We are still a few meetings away from that, but that will come in April. Okay. So listed, listed on the slide now are some of the things that we're still waiting for to have the final presentation to the board. We have not finished our tax cap calculation yet. We will talk a little bit about that tonight because I did do an estimate for it. But we're still waiting for, for our debt service budget from our financial advisors. That has a big impact on the tax cap. We do try to keep that number about the same year to year, but there is small fluctuations sometimes. I'm assuming that it'll be the same next year as it was last year. But then we also need to receive pilot information from the IDA. So the pilots affect the tax cap, too. We, I believe, will have the same developers on the pilot schedule next year as this year, except for one that's ending. But I just need to get confirmation from the ID about, IDA about that before we finalize the tax cap calculation. Also, a big item is the legislative budget from New York State isn't due yet until April 1st. So we're using the governor's proposal, and we don't know if that'll change before April 1st when the state legislature needs to have their budget in place. It looks like they might be using the same figures, but we really don't know that at this time. I've seen years where the state legislature actually would provide a lot more in state aid to school districts. Other years, they provided exactly what the governor proposed. And then there's also years they provide something totally different, and we might receive a little less aid than we are expecting. So all of that is a really big part in determining the last part of the budget. And then also Duchess Boses is one of our biggest providers of services. We pay over $11 million a year to Boses. Using Boses actually helps us generate aid. Our aid ratio on Boses expenditures is over 60%. So we use Boses whenever we can, but it does have a, a big impact on the actual expenditure side because even though we're budgeting for the aid that we'll receive, we also have to budget on the expense side what we expect to pay. We did get the request forms from all of the Boses that we use, and we should be finalizing those next month. Next month, also D HIC, which is our health insurance consortium, will be setting the rates for next year. We are assuming high rates. Right now, we're assuming 8% in the budget because of the cost increases that the consortium is experiencing. We expect to have much higher insurance rates next year. The board may remember that for the last several years, I believe the last four years, we've had what we call a health insurance holiday in that D HIC will spend down some of its own fund balance by not charging school districts, employees, or the retirees for one month a year. And we're not sure if that'll occur next year either. The trustees of D HIC don't vote on that until June. And then finally, the administrator budget request will have to be considered, too. Thank you. So the revenue budget is shown here. Everything that's shown up on the screen for 2025-26 is really preliminary at this time for all of the reasons I just mentioned. We don't know our final tax amount yet. We're assuming it'll be around 2.7%, but that would be if the board were to move forward with being at the tax cap. And that's something that we'll talk about at the next meeting. For our state aid, like I said earlier, we're using the governor's proposal of about $45.7 million. Other revenues include things like interest income. We do earn over $1 million a year in interest. The reason is that our taxes are collected in the fall, but we have that money throughout the year to pay our, our expenditures. So we do invest those funds until we need them. We also have pilot revenues in classified under other revenues, and now we're up to over $700,000 a year just in pilot revenues. And then the fund balance appropriation, like I mentioned earlier, that's the budget amount that we have to use to balance the budget. Our expense budget has to match our revenue budget. So whenever there's a budget gap, we use current year fund balance to, to balance the budget. Thank you. So for the expenditures, this slide should look somewhat familiar because it was presented the last time, except you had only seen changes in the benefits and the salaries. That's because we were assuming in the rollover that everything next year would stay the same. There are four categories here that actually show a decrease now. That's based on us just really looking at the budget, looking at what we had budgeted in '24, '25 school year and what we're spending. So one example is in the supply code, we reduced that because we had more budgeted for fuel oil and gasoline and diesel fuel than we actually need. There were, a couple of years ago, when the prices were going really high and we reacted to that and put a little more into the budget than we actually needed. And we're realizing even with the projections for next year that we had too much in those codes, so we reduced them. We also don't need as much in equipment next year as we had in this year's budget, so we're reducing that amount by $450,000. And we found some savings in contractual and also the transfers that we make to other funds. So the budget that we vote on is for the general fund, but we also have food service fund, a special aid fund. We have a fund for special revenues, and occasionally the general fund will pay some of their expenditures, but we can reduce that area. And then, of course, the employee benefit, benefits are increasing just over $2 million, and the majority of that is in health insurance.
So in terms of the budget requests, I believe I mentioned this previously at the first budget session, that we're looking to not only go through a matrix that we've developed to determine the alignment with the requests and our strategic plan, but we're also prioritizing between each of the items that are being requested with either a critical or a programmatic requirement, whether it's a special ed service that needs to be provided or, or any other required supports. We're identifying the next level, which would be important. So it's something that, whether it's the state that's, you know, pushing the initiative or, or it's just something that we need for our students based on our data, we're identifying that as, as important. And then lastly, desirable. So these are sort of like our wish list items, things that we want. May not be programmatically required, but it's something that schools are requesting based on, on the rationale that they provide. And so some of the things that we're doing is with the expenditures, we're, we're trying to leverage our grant funds to help offset some of the expenses. So we will be discussing that in, in our process because we want to make sure that we're leveraging every single dollar, again, to minimize the impact on our taxpayers. And so that process, again, we, we're in, in the process as we speak. We should have that finalized for our next board meeting. And so Linda and I will go through some of the items that are, have been requested. Again, we cannot afford everything that's being requested. We have to make some, some decisions in terms of what's required, what's prioritized, what can be funded through, through grants for this year. And then we'll reevaluate things as we move forward. So all those factors, those are things that we have to consider as we're putting forward the budget. The other thing that I do want to mention is that, again, part of this is, you know, how are we being fiscally responsible by only requesting the, the amount of funds that we need in order to provide the services and resources that we're identifying? And so we'll go through some of these items, and Linda and I will tag team this. I'll have her start with the first couple of items.
Okay, thank you. So like Dr. Roman said, we will be analyzing all of the requests. And we plan to continue showing what the requests were and then what the decision is. So if we find an expense that would fit into a grant, we'll keep it on this list in the future presentations and show that we, we're going to move it into a grant. We're also considering using some of our expend, our, our budget this year for some of the non-salary and non-benefit requests so that we could utilize some excess funds we have this year to buy some of the non-salary items. So first of all, the first thing on here is the teacher retirements. The teacher retirements usually help us save in the budget because the people that we hire to replace our retiring teachers are usually younger and they don't have as much experience. So we hire them at a lower step. Even though when we do hire retirement or replacements for retirements, we're increasing our benefits cost because our retirees are entitled to benefits, but it still provides an overall savings to the budget usually. You'll notice on here, we have listed 10 HPTA retirements. We actually know of one more, so at the next presentation, we'll show you the effect of having 11 retirees. We got a request from the athletic department to buy some wrestling mats for next year and for scoreboard for the FDR Gym. We're also considering a request from the music department for 17 digital pianos. The total cost up here is $40,000, but I just want to point out that we did find or the, fine and performing arts director found $20,000 savings in the budget that she's removing to help offset that cost. For transportation, we are looking at a new routing software. We have an item in our budget that's been there for a few years for new tablets. And if we remove that from the budget, but by the routing software, we'll actually have a savings of about $31,000. Another request that we have is to move the student supplies from the fiscal stimulus grants into the general fund. That is something that we talked about when we were talking about the grants, but it's not moved over to the general fund yet because our grant actually ended on September 30th, 2024. So for this school year, the student supplies that we purchased were through the grant. So it's listed here because it would be a new item in the general fund to move it over.
And that's supplies, we get all the supplies like we've been doing?
Yes.
In terms of some of the items that Linda has reviewed, some of these items are in disrepair or need to be kind of refurbished or refreshed in terms of replacement. In terms of the athletic assistant wrestling coach, the program has grown large. They have over 30 students in the wrestling program, and it necessitates additional support. So you'll see that in one of the requests. Additionally, the physical education department has requested to provide some more opportunities for our students through the unified bowling program. We also have a request for positive behavior intervention and support stipends. That's to continue to have a robust PBIS program for our schools and having supports in place to look at the data, to plan the various activities, to highlight what expected behaviors should be for students in different areas of the building. We also had a request for MTSS stipends. Again, as we're rolling out our multi-tier system of supports, this stipend would be, again, looking at various data points, meeting with staff, being able to come up with plans of action to help students, whether it's academically or behaviorally, monitoring the progress, and then coming back to the table to report those, those data points. In terms of E and L teacher, there has been a request for .5. That may increase depending on an audit that's being done to review the, the new needs that are being presented. So that information may change the request from a .5 to a full-time FTE, but we're still waiting on a finalized report on, on the review of, of our current caseload and the supports that we have in place. There's also a request for an AIS teacher utilizing teaching assistants that may have been designed to support AIS math and making the, the shift over to AIS providers. We're really struggling with getting teaching assistants, and so that's an area that we have to continue to do better in terms of recruitment. But nevertheless, that's been a request made by our math department. And then the last two are additional stipends. One is for AIM High Advisors. That's a program at the high school, AIM to support our students with setting career goals and various other structures that they have in place with this new program. And then lastly, it's the auto mechanic advisor stipend.
So this is the second page of the request. There's a few items listed here. The high school also requested a quiz bowl advisor. This is a position that's in the HPTA contract. It's just not filled at this time, so we would have to add it to the budget to have the funding for that. Our facilities department currently has a vacancy for a half-time groundskeeper, and they've made a request to change that to a full-time position. The groundskeeper that, the half-time groundskeeper that was in that position that resigned recently had been working a lot of overtime. He was working nearly full-time. And having someone that would be another full-time groundskeeper would allow us to provide more service at the high school. The intent is to have someone that works in the evenings when students are there for different events. We would design it so that the, the shift would be Tuesday through Saturday in, in the evening. So there'd be someone at the school, at the high school when kids are using our fields. And also, it would be a time that they could get work done, such as mowing the lawns and, and, and the other work that the groundskeepers have to do that's really hard to do during the day when more people are around. We also have a request for change, for adding a part-time hourly custodial worker. We have a tenant at Hyde Park Elementary School for the UPK program, and they recently signed an agreement with us to pay for custodial coverage. The agreement basically divides the square footage of the building up, and for the cost of a part-time custodian, they would pay the share that's associated with their square footage. So the district would pay the remainder, the remaining amount of the cost, which is about $11,000. This is something that we noticed is really needed for safety. We currently have that school open during the day with students there, but there isn't a custodian on site until early afternoon. Also, we had a request from the high school to add a 10-month secretary for attendance. The middle school requested a full-time 12-month student records assistant. Sorry. We also have a request to hire two full-time LPNs for the elementary schools. We currently have two LPNs that we kept in the budget this year that, between the two of them, they work at the four elementary schools. We are also considering reducing a microcomputer technician. That position is currently vacant, and it seems we can find some efficiencies by providing stipends to some people to do that work rather than hiring a full-time person. And then the bus garage requested changing a title in their office from bus driver office assistant to school bus dispatcher. We currently have a school bus dispatcher and the bus driver office assistant, but they do fill in for one another, and they both work different shifts. So when the school bus dispatcher isn't there, the other person does that work. And this would just provide some equity in that department.
Just want to make, I just want to make it clear that these items are, are not what we're proposing at this particular moment. Okay? So I just, we're, we're still going through our process, through our matrix, our prioritization. At the next board meeting, we're going to come back with the items that we are recommending to be moved forward into the expense side of the budget. So I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah, thank you. So the, the amount here is the maximum. If everything was accepted, it would cost the district $163,000. But none of this budget is included in the expense slides that were shown earlier.
So I have some comments and questions. Can you split this up between like people expense and non-people expense? Kind of like, you know, you have two pages, so maybe page one is, you know, what are we asking for? People expense and what is non?
Absolutely.
You know, just to make it visually easier to read. Secondly, you know, maybe in backup slides, if we can get maybe the why on some of these things? Like, it'd be good to know, like, why are we asking for, you know, eight PBS, PBIS stipends? You know, like, in, in some more detail, like, how many do we have today? And why do we need eight more? What is the, what is the rationale behind that? It'd be good to see that. And again, you don't have to be, not in this chart, maybe some backup data to see that. And then the last comment, so we just saw data, you know, and it's pretty consistent throughout the district where ELA is kind of suffering, you know, we need some attention. I don't see any requests here to kind of, maybe I'm missing something, but no real requests are lining up with trying to shore up that area, right? So are there any, you know, any, any things we're looking at to, to kind of help the problem areas that we need some extra attention on?
Yeah, I'm going to have Jessica Turner just respond to that piece.
So, good evening. We actually, my colleague Jennifer Kreiser, Amy, and I and Dr. Roman have launched a literacy initiative to take a look at that. So in next week, and on February 26th, we have the Literacy Innovation Committee convening where we'll be looking at the expectations laid out by the state in their rubric along with the work that the committee did last year when they brought on UFLY, which is our foundational phonics program. We have five companies coming in to review curriculum resources with our teachers. The teachers will provide feedback and choose two of those resource sources that they'll practice in the buildings. Then on superintendent's conference day on March 14th, we will also have the consultants back and give all... have the consultants back and give all elementary teachers an opportunity to review and listen about those resources directly from the vendor, not from someone on the committee, and take a look at those resources as long as bring the board and invite you to look at those resources. Once we have the two resources, then we'll be able to take a better look at what the costs would be. So more towards the end of February, because depending on the resource, you have to know what's the pupil, like, what are the consumable costs? What's the first-year cost and create a fiscal plan for three to five years. So we are in the process. We just don't have the numbers yet.
And I was under the impression the deadline has passed for new requests, so this isn't a final list, or is?
Yeah, no. So in terms, in terms of the resources, the other piece is we have to repurpose some of the funds that are currently being used for various programs that may not continue. And so that, that is still part of, of the process. So that, that's work that has to be done with that committee, because we can't continue to add program after program after program and not do away with some of the programs that are not proving to be effective. So we're going to be looking to reallocate some of those funds to be able to fund whichever program is moving forward.
But until you have all that data, and how do you, how can you make a decision on this stuff and knock stuff out of this until you have the full picture of what's being asked? I don't, I mean.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So if we have a request to add a new program for literacy, like Dr. Roman said, if we're reducing our budget for another, it'll zero out. So like, for example, we have a large BOSI's budget for instruction, and there's all kinds of equipment under the one, or not, I'm sorry, software and other programs under the one account code. And when we work with BOSI's, we tell them, okay, this is our amount of our budget, and these are the items that we're going to purchase with it. And that part of the budget hasn't been done yet. Like, it's completed next month. So if it's not, yeah, if it's not a new dollar amount, it.
Yeah, I guess I struggle that, you know, some of that effort may say we need 10 new teachers to help shore up, you know, this type of thing, right?
No, so that, that won't, that won't yield that type of, of response. It's going to be more of the resources that we have in place or that we have to put in place that are aligned with some of the evidence-based programs that the state is asking us to take a look at. But it's going to be repurposing some of the funds that we have, but then also in terms of our BOSI's budget, sometimes what we could do is we can actually have programs go through, but BOSI's, we get reimbursed through BOSI's, and so that, that is sort of like a pool of funds that we identify, and we can actually utilize some of those instructional funds that go through BOSI's to fund.
So that's implying that the scores that we see are because of the programs that we have and not a staffing issue, is what that implies?
Correct, correct, correct.
And I will just add to what Linda and Dr. Roman said. We also have title funds, which Dr. Roman referred to earlier, that currently help support our school improvement process. And so we will be able to allocate some of those funds. We're just waiting and watching to see the impact of those from the federal government.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not limiting ourselves to saying we, you know, we're not looking at staffing increases at this point, and it's only program. I mean, it should be, what do we need to fix the problem, and then go from there, whatever that, you know, whatever that fix is, let's put it on the table, and then, and then decide from there. I think that.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Sorry.
Are there any other questions? Oh, that's right. So our last slide here is the, the calendar of our presentations. So at the next meeting, we'll be talking about the tax cap. That's the most exciting budget presentation, and I show you the calculation to get to the tax cap. I do have to file the paperwork with New York State by March 1st, and normally what I do is I put in, I let New York State know what the maximum will be, and then I have the opportunity to go in and change it before we finalize the budget to indicate if the amount of the taxes would be a different amount. We should have a better idea of our, our state aid and our DHIQ, which is our health insurance rates, by March 27th. So we're expecting to have a more finalized budget at the end of March. The board does have to approve the present, the propositions. So in the, at the first meeting in March, no, I'm sorry, at the second meeting in March, but you don't have to approve the dollar amount of the general fund then. So for example, if we have another proposition for bus purchases, the board would have to approve that at March 27th and approve that we will have a general fund budget next year, and then in April, you actually would approve the dollar amount. There's also a presentation in April on a Tuesday night for the board to vote on the BOSI's budget. That's required to be on Tuesday because all of the school districts in the county vote on the same night. Again, the board only votes on the administrative costs of the, of the BOSI's budget. After, after that, we'll also have the adoption of the property tax report card the same night. That's when we officially have a budget. When the board adopts the property tax report card, you're actually approving the dollar amount of the budget. That gets filed with New York State, and then we can schedule a hearing after that, which has to be, well, it'll be on May 8th at District Office, and then our vote is on May 20th at Havlin Middle School.
Along with the timeline, I know in years past, we've had trouble with communications, you know, you know, are we making sure that all gets lined up so we don't have that happening again?
Yes, that's part of the process for, for the, we have meetings with the other departments that handle the postage and getting the permits paid.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just two quick ones. Stipends, do we have MTSS stipends now? Is that a new, that's a new idea?
That would be new.
One of my questions just was how those stipends are calculated, because they're new and they're different from, say, say, the AIM High stipend. So it would be just at some point an explanation on how those stipends are determined. And then in two places, you have teachers replacing TAs, and Dr. Roman, you mentioned that we're having trouble filling positions. I just want to make sure we're not talking about people losing their jobs. We're talking about these are positions that are not filled.
Vacancies.
And so we're gonna, okay.
Yeah, those are, those are vacant, good, good question. Those are vacancies that were designed to support math specifically. And so one of the shifts that has been happening over the past, I would say, like, maybe two, maybe even three years, the, the request has come in, and we're seeing, as you saw, the math data is improving. The shift to have AIS teachers, math AIS teachers, so the, the TAs that would normally support the, the math, they would now be sort of vacant positions turned into the AIS teacher position. So repurposing the, the positions to have certified teachers in the classroom to support students.
Okay, thank you.
That was kind of my point before is, you know, you have vacancies in math teaching assistants, so obviously they're not contributing to the positive math scores, yet we're hiring another math teacher, but we don't have the same for, you know, for the ELA portion. It's just something to think about, right?
No, but that's, that's actually, to that point, that's what's been happening over the past couple of years in terms of shifting from the TAs to the math AIS math teachers. So that, that's not just a one-year thing. That's been happening over the past couple of years.
Right, but that's my point, is we see things like this contribute to positive math.
Yes, I see what you're saying.
But I don't see anything for ENL or ELA, right?
Got it.
I mean, I don't see any of that here. And we know, hey, you know, we put, you know, math coaches, we put teaching assistants, now we're putting an AIS teacher for math, and we see success. So.
Okay. So we, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely make sure that that's detailed in there, even though it's not, it's not going to be paid for out of the general fund. It may be coming out of a title grant or somewhere else. But I see what you're saying. You want to see what that looks like in terms of the work moving forward.
Right, because to me, you, you don't have a math AIS teacher, and you don't have three teaching assistants, but yet our math scores released here, you know, and consistent throughout the district look pretty good. So that, these vacancies aren't contributing to success, but yet we're, we're adding more. And I, I don't see the same type of stuff happening for ELA, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I know we added ELA coaches last year.
Right.
You know, maybe too soon to see if they're actually having an impact, but I think we should probably pay some attention to that like this.
Okay.
Just to clarify the math AIS teachers, we currently have the math AIS teachers that are working. We have additional vacancies. So what we've done is we've transferred from math TAs to math teacher over the year. But we have math TAs currently supporting that. These aren't new positions. They're just shifting a position to an, from one to another, vacancies that were not filled. But we can provide a ratio of how many math supports and how many ELA supports in a future correspondence. We have that information.
I think I'm clear on, on the ask. The ask is, what are we doing with ELA and making sure that we outline that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think I'm clear on that.
Any other questions? Ed, you good? I can't see you. Good. Carl? All right, thank you. Moving on to 8.1, public participation. Can I get a motion to enter public participation, please?
No, moved.
Second, Ed.
Any discussion? Alders in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The board reminds speakers that the public comment portion of our meeting is only one item on a lengthy agenda. The segment of public participation will be limited to an overall time of 21 minutes. We ask that each speaker be concise and that remarks be limited to three minutes. We expect individuals participating in public comment to speak respectfully and courteously, modeling proper civility and decorum for our students. And when you come up, please provide your name and address when you reach the podium. Would anyone like to address the board?
My name is Alma Sanford. I'm the district nurse coordinator, full-time nurse at Violet Avenue, and parent in the district. First of all, Mr. Whedon, excellent, excellent presentation. It's been a pleasure having you in our building for such a short time. So thank you. I just want to talk about the attendance initiative for just a moment. I'm fully on board with it. I do believe, you know, our kids need to come to school. But a lens that I don't think, or a little blind spot that we're not realizing, and I'm coming from a healthcare perspective, is that now we have parents that are sending sick kids to school because they're concerned that their child is missing school. So, you know, we, we went from one extreme during COVID, where nobody came to school when you had, you know, a sniffle, to now I've had, I can tell you two incidents where a parent was sending a child to school who had been vomiting that morning, but she was so concerned about the absenteeism, which is wonderful, but it was sort of not the target audience. So we also had a child who barely got in on crutches because the parent was worried that she was going to miss school. So this is just here that I've had two examples, but there have been other schools where this has happened. So I don't know what the answer is. You know, sometimes when we have a broad message that we want to send out, it's sometimes the most conscientious that are the ones that are most worried about it. So I hope we can be mindful or figure out a way that we want to ease people's minds that, you know, this isn't punitive and please keep your child home. I know we've sent out, you know, the little stickers or magnets, but that doesn't help. I, I mean, it's, it's common sense. It's, it's not, but this is what I'm seeing. I don't know what the answer is, but that's why you guys are here. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, since nobody, I'll, oh, I'm just kidding.
I'm Bobby Goodman. I hear that the answer to your question, Christine, about why that cohort has better scores, is that they actually have three sections, so the class sizes are smaller in that cohort. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Robyn Peak. I actually just had a really quick question with something that Jessica said about, excuse me, about meeting with Jennifer Kreiser-Aimie herself and Dr. Roman about the ENL. Is the ENL coordinator going to be in that as well? And that's all my question. That's it.
Oh, yeah, the reading, the literacy.
Would anyone else like to address the board? At this time, we will close public participation. So thank you for your comments. So I, on the attendance thing, I don't know. Are there, are there customized things to say? What's acceptable absences or something?
So I think it was referenced with, in terms of the magnet. Magnet is just one of the items that are designed to say when a student should be coming to school, when a student should not be coming to school. Things like, you know, ill, those are things that clearly are in the red column. So it's a green and a red. But in addition to that, we have a video that has been created and several other communications that have been sent out to our families with regards to the initiative, but also when to send a student home or keep a student home. We will, we'll certainly take that feedback into consideration, and if we need to send out reminders, we'll, we'll definitely do that.
Okay. Well, I have no real comment for Bobby's stuff, so she just made a comment, no question. So the last plea was for Jessica.
I was so eager to answer. Our coordinator for ENL is part of the committee.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to 9.1, board subcommittee reports. So it looks like policy met on 121. Exciting to report?
Mostly, and I think you'll see it in the approvals, it's clearing up verbiage and making minor necessary changes from stated, but other than that, no, nothing really worth discussing too much.
Okay, thanks. Community chat. We had one at Havlin on, on 128. I don't know, Mike, you want to tell about all the exciting things we talked about that night? We actually had nobody show up. That's why Carl made his comment earlier. So, you know, we take, you know, an hour out of our time, you know, to, to go to these community chats, and if it's not going to be used, we're, we just won't do community chats anymore. So if you want to talk to the board informally, please show up at community chats. Duchess County School Board Association met on 26. I think that's you, Ed?
Yeah, so just a couple of updates from Duchess County School Board. So we had a speaker. His name was Evan Ostroff from Ostroff Associates in Albany, and he basically broke down the state budget process. And he took questions from different board members from around the county about what he's seeing, you know, in Albany and so forth with Governor Hochul's proposals. So the way this works is the governor puts in the proposals. The actual budget is not finalized till April 1st, I believe, as Linda kind of pointed out in the budget process. So there's a quick turnaround with this. Some of the things that Governor Vogel is proposing, if you haven't heard, is continuation of free breakfast and lunch for students, an extension of funding for CTE, some funding for teachers and teachers' assistance, as Dr. Roman was mentioning about the difficulty sometimes getting good-quality teacher assistance, and a cell phone ban for the fall. Yes, a cell phone ban statewide for the fall because she feels that we should be teaching bell-to-bell, and she feels that it's a complete distraction in school. I'm currently. I'm currently working in a school where there is a cell phone ban, and there's positives to that, but there's also challenges because you have to get people to agree with you and go along with it and so forth, so there is a lot involved with that. There was a lobbying day up in Albany just yesterday and so forth. I wasn't able to attend that, and I don't think anybody on our board was able to attend that. Duchess County BOSEs is having a prospective new board member set of training days. I believe the dates are on March 11th and March 25th from 9:00 to 12:00. You have to contact your local district's board clerk, so in this case, that's Joanne, if you're interested in running for a board position, and then you can attend these training days to go over what it's like to be a board member and so forth. So, if anybody's involved with that, you know, or interested in attending that, please reach out to Joanne in the district office and so forth. Some of the other things we just talked about in the meetings were, you know, e-buses and where are we with, there's a couple of bills going through the legislature now that e-buses may be pushed back, maybe, hasn't been put back, but maybe. And also, the whole idea about the, the temperature climate controls at 88%, that there may be an addition of a phrase, "where practable" for next year, so it won't be a mandate. Those are not passed, but they're in, right now, in the legislature for continuation. So, we had a nice lively discussion about a variety of things going on, and we also had a recent meeting with Didi Barrett. So, we are continuing to advocate based on those goals that we provided from all the districts to the Duchess County School Boards, meeting with the legislators and meeting in Albany and so forth.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Any, any other committee reports?
Special education subcommittee met. We discussed improving co-teaching. There's been some coaching of staffs to teach them how to best co-teach the most effective ways of co-teaching inclusion classes, or co-taught classes. And then, there's, they're also working on how to get kids their related services, but still allow them to miss less class time because so many kids are getting pulled out for their services that they're missing valuable class and instruction time. So, they're working towards kind of figuring out how they can get their services and still attend class and get the material. But the thing that was discussed that I was most excited about was, they talked, we talked about, it's a CPSC, CSE transition workshop where parents of kids transitioning from the CPSC to CSE would get to meet with the teachers at the elementary, or teachers at the elementary schools, service providers at the elementary schools, and just kind of get an idea of what will be different and what to expect once their kids get to kindergarten.
Okay, thank you. Mike, Mike, you had something?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that maybe for the next board meeting or one after that, we set as an agenda item for discussion, the community chat, to make a decision. So, we talk about whether we're going to do it or not. And during, during that, the one that you, Carl and I were at, we sort of brainstormed about ways to maybe reduce the number, but make them more targeted or things like that. So, I'd like to just pose that as a board discussion topic for maybe the next, next meeting.
Okay. Any other committee? Now, moving on to board discussion.
Just one comment. I believe Joanne pointed out that I'm signed up for the community chat. I don't know if any other board members are signed up for the virtual one. So, I, I believe we said we need at least two, so just if anybody's interested in joining the next chat.
Okay. Yeah, so 9.2, board discussion, anything from anyone? So, I would, last year, we spoke about when we, when we are using super eval for Dr. Roman's or any superintendent's evaluation, we, we are now using the super eval tool, and we talked about using that for our board goals as well, but we never made the commitment to do that. So, I just wanted to get everyone's opinion on, on if they want to use that tool for our board goals and, you know, be very similar to what Dr. Roman puts in there.
It's, it's actually about board self-assessment, right? We set the goals and then we put that into the tool, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, which we, we haven't done a very good job at assessing ourselves, so I'm, I'm entirely in favor.
Okay. Do we need a vote for that or next month? We could just say we're going to, I mean, because there is, it does cost money, so I don't know. Do we?
I think we need a vote for it.
I mean, okay, because I think we have budget, yeah. Yeah, we have. Yeah, so I guess, all those in favor for using super eval for our board goals and self-evaluation? Aye. All right, unanimous, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other board discussion? I did have another one for the consent agenda, sorry. On the overnight field trip, just if, like, in the, you know, in what we can see, it, the, the money for this, it says there's no cost to the students, and there is a chartered bus, and it says it's covered out of the general budget for the WCP program. So, and then, sometimes we get these requests where kids have to fundraise or there's other sourcing funds. So, if, if we can get, I, I would like to see the rules about what comes out of, you know, general fund, why do kids, some kids have to fundraise, why, why do some come out of the budget? Just some rules around field trips in general as funding sources are concerned.
Okay. I will say, thank you for asking me about this earlier. I was able to look, look it up. We are, we pay BOSEs for the curriculum and instruction part of Winter Circle, and this field trip is included in that. It's part of the agreement between Winter Circle and BOSEs to provide the field trip.
Sure, but it still comes out of, it still comes out of budget, right?
Oh, yeah, the district is paying.
Right, so, so that's what I'm curious about, is why does the district pay for some things like this, but other things people have to fundraise for? So, just if, whatever, I mean, I don't know if we have a policy for that or, or what. I don't know how it works. And I think, I personally would like to see how it works. Thank you. Any other board discussion for the consent agenda?
I just wanted to ask 10.8 about the Winter Circles. Not so much the trip, but how is that going in general? Are the numbers up for the students participating? Is there any news this year? It's obviously a very successful program, but anything in general about Winter Circles? Maybe Dr. Roman or Jessica.
So, at, at this particular time, the, the number of students is consistent compared to last year, just thinking about the space of the room and the equipment that they're using. They have to keep it to a consistent number. I'm sure the interest is there to increase the program. We've, we've received tremendous feedback from the students and, and the staff about how engaged they are. They take this very seriously, whatever aspect of the work they're doing, whether it's the marketing, whether it's the build, and so, it's something that hopefully, we can, we can expand in, in future years. Thank you. You're welcome.
And due to the formation of the booster club with it, they are going to be able to dispose of the car differently this year, and they are building a beast this year. It's almost ridiculous. Huh? No, I couldn't afford it.
I would just like to say something on top of that. I do agree that it is a very popular thing, especially at FDR, and we do get a lot of, like, you know, we get to know a lot about it. When I was doing the eighth grade orientation, I did realize that a lot of students were very interested and kind of thinking about it because it does give you certain credits that you need for graduation. So, I would agree that it's a program that is definitely expanding and it's grabbing students' interests. So, I think, you know, continuing is a really nice thing, and even expanding it would be really nice to at FDR.
So, this evening on the consent agenda for the personnel committee, we do want to recognize quite a number of teacher retirements. And so, I did this last year, and I think this year definitely surpassed last year's numbers. So, in combined years of service, three centuries, 301 years combined service. So, we, we want to, we want to, first of all, congratulate.
Is that only four people?
We want to congratulate everyone on this list. That number of years of service to, to this community, to our students, to our families is, is remarkable, and we certainly will be missing a tremendous value added to our community. And so, I just want to go through the names. I want to congratulate Catherine Choyinsky, Michael Serencion, Jeffrey Dropauer, Marian Laluna, Justin Murphy, Elizabeth O'Brien, James Osborne, Margaret Shemel Finnick, Ruth Sprague, Joanne Wood, and Lisa Yorak. Congratulations, 301 years of service to the High Park Central School District.
All right, any other comments? Okay, at this time, can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. 11.1, policy first consideration of policies. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second, Christine. Any discretion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. 11.2, confidential managerial terms and conditions updated. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second was Margaret. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. 12.1, can I get a motion to enter our second public participation?
So moved.
Second, Tibbetts.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Would anyone like to address the board? Okay, seeing that nobody, I'll close public participation. Any other matters deemed necessary by the board? All right, no need for a second executive session, so can I get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second was Carl. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting is adjourned.